I hereby call to order the regular meeting for the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, January 27, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Paling.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabebs.
Here.
We are all very excited that Principal Dana Naziakos will be introducing some Mackenzie Cheetahs to lead us in our pledge.
Thank you for having us. I am so thrilled to have with me our instructional coach, Erin Schrader, third grade teacher Victoria Clayton, and a group of amazing third grade mathematicians that will quickly introduce themselves.
My name's Gabriel.
My name's Rowan.
My name's Nick.
My name's Pippa.
My name's Millie.
My name's Michael.
My name's Zoe.
My name is Liam.
We are excited to share with you a piece of our new Bridges math curriculum. One of the key components of Bridges is Number Corner. Number Corner is a daily routine that helps children develop a strong understanding of numbers, improve their calculation skills, become better problem solvers, and confidently communicate about math through talking or writing. Because it's built into our K-4 schedule, every student benefits from this consistent, engaging, and adaptable learning experience. Think of Number Corner as a daily dose of math vitamins. This month in Number Corner, and what you will be seeing today, third graders continue to develop their understanding of fractions using calendar grid and number line workouts. They've also been thinking about time as they collect minutes and hours during the calendar collector workout. Computational fluency in January focused on multiplying by five and 10. During the solving problem workout, students solve two-step problem situations. Tonight, you'll get a closer look at two key Number Corner workouts, calendar grid, and number line. So I'll turn it over to our amazing teachers. Students, you could take a seat just like you're in the classroom.
It would be helpful people at home can hear them.
Okay. So we're giving you a sneak peek of what everyone else in your classroom will see tomorrow. So today, we flipped over Monday, January 27. Now you need to predict what we're going to see on tomorrow's marker.
It's gonna be yellow. Um, a square. Um, I think the frackin', the fraction's gonna be in a one eighth. Because one was a six. And I think it's adding two. I think it will be two eighths. Um, even though um, even though that there's already been two eighths on the 16th, um, I think it's just gonna be split up differently, like in different spots.
That's what Liam said. Two eighths.
When you're looking at these fractions, what patterns do you notice? Who can describe the patterns that we've learned about during this month's Number Corner?
Um, I know, um, we learned this Number Corner is that, um, in like, um, in this diagonal row, in this one, they're all fully colored in. And in this row, they're like half colored in. Um, this diagonal line is like, um, if it was like split into four parts almost, it'd be like one of the fourth parts.
The one that we looked over that was orange in a diagonal was what?
One eighth.
Was it one eighth? We have two eighths, and here we have one fourth. Let's see what's why.
Um, because on 28, it's actually equivalent to day 22 because one quarter or one-fourth is filled in on both day 28 and 22. Two eighths is also one quarter or one-fourth.
Last week, we wrote some comparison statements. Why do you think I got all of the squares out? Millie? They're all the same hole. Is that correct? Is that what we see here? So now what I want you to do on your whiteboards is pick any two of these fractions and write them in a comparison statement. What are the three symbols that we use when we make a comparison statement?
Greater than, less than, and equal to.
And then after you finish that, you can write one comparison statement using these fractions that are up here.
I did one-fourth and one-eighth.
But how did you write?
I did one-fourth is greater than one-eighth. Um, because one-eighth is one, is one fraction of eighths. And one-fourth is, um, a bit bigger for, um, fraction because the smaller the denominator is, um, the, the bigger the fraction is. As long as the numerator is the same, then that technically would be correct. But if the numerator's different, then it doesn't technically have to be correct since if three eighths were filled in, it would be greater than one-fourth.
We're gonna do one round of Freddy the Frog. Okay? So I am thinking of a fraction. Oh my gosh, I hope I can remember which one it is. I should have whispered it to Ms. Clayton beforehand. But you're gonna use this, whoops, table to help you. So she's gonna put Freddy the Frog right here. I made a little line right here. Place him right there. So if you remember, it's sort of like read my mind. So you're trying to guess what fraction I'm representing on this number line. And then, once you make your guess, the only thing I'm going to say is greater than or less than. Rowan?
Is it two-sixths?
Uh, it is less than two-sixths. Hmm, it's less than one-fourth. It's equivalent, thank you, Ms. Clayton, it's equivalent to one-fourth.
Is it two-eighths?
All right, where's Freddy the Frog now?
Um, I think Freddy the Frog's on five-sixth.
Mathematicians did great. Let's all stand. Why don't you put your
Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and ever to be.
Thank you so much for coming to our board meeting and leading us in the pledge and sharing your learning and your thinking with us. That was really fascinating. I think we all learned a lot. And if you want to meet me over here, we have a little bit of merchandise for you. There's some parting gifts, and I will give each one of you those. And then you can meet your parents in the lobby. And your teachers get parting gifts too, I believe. I think, yes.
Well done, students. Parents, thank you so much for sharing your children with us this evening. It's really fun to see their thinking.
Yeah. They're so cute.
Same thing. Does it mean same?
That's how it works. Yeah, yeah.
Wait, break, scratch it. Life seems so dull now, you know?
The best part of our meeting has gone out into the hall.
Don't worry. Okay.
Oh, yeah, right.
Awesome.
It was awesome.
Think about where Freddy the Frog is next.
All right, I'm gonna direct your attention to the lovely artwork that's on the wall in the mech this month. Catherine Trump's Harper Elementary School artist's work is displayed this month. It is a vast variety of artwork highlighting texture painting, identity logos, Scandinavian folk art, Las Molas-inspired prints, and a dolphin mural celebrating diversity, equity, and inclusion. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the December 16, 2024, Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the December 16, 2024, minutes of the Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes? Please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Yea. Motion carries by general consent. This would be the opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. I do not see any board or see any public members here. Is there anyone here who wants to speak at this time? Okay. And if not, we will move on to board reports. We're starting, uh, we did not have Facility Development Committee this month, but we did have school finance. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Stone. So the School Finance Committee met as part of the January 13, 2025 Committee of the Whole. During this meeting, the board reviewed various school fees for the next school year. They reviewed the instructional material fees and the fees for instrumental music, lunch, transportation, and athletics. The board had the opportunity to consider multiple options when deciding where to set fees for the 2025-26 school year. Members discussed the various fee options and agreed that instructional materials, instrumental music, and athletic fees should be raised according to the Consumer Price Index. Due to supply cost fluctuations and the potential deficit in the 2024-25 budget, the board agreed that lunch fees should be raised by 7% with a new proposed lunch fee for fifth and sixth graders. The board agreed to postpone the decision on transportation fees until Mr. Boltmeyer has the projected costs from the transportation bid this spring. Fiscal year 2026 budget calendar and resolution were also reviewed. That's it.
All right, thank you. Strategy Committee, Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs.
The Strategy Committee also met as part of the January 13, 2025 Committee of the Whole. Kelly Jackson and Kate Dominique shared the most recent update of the work of the grades five through eight Scheduling Committee. Uh, both HMS and WJHS schedule teams have met since the last update in December to evaluate feedback and make any necessary adjustments to the schedule recommendations. Adjustments have been made to the initial recommended schedule changes based on feedback from staff and further evaluation. The committee will continue to evaluate and refine adjustments in preparation for implementation in the 2025-26 school year. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Liaison Reports, we are starting off with the Community Review Committee, or CRC. Mrs. Hart.
Yes, I attended the meeting, learned more about the research and work to date that's taking place on the topic of fostering a sense of belonging in schools. The committee broke out and worked in groups for most of the meeting, and they are on track to present their findings and recommendations later this spring.
Thank you. Moving on to Ed Foundation, Mrs. Paling.
Yes, the Ed Foundation met on January 22nd. Uh, and then they were planning for Bingo Night, which has now passed. It was a sold-out event. And they are planning for Trivia Night, which is Saturday, April 5th, at St. Joe's. So we can all help spread the word on that. Uh, the deadline for submitting for GRIP grants is coming up in a month, February 24th. And they will be meeting to vote for GRIP grants at their next meeting, which is on March 18th.
All right, thank you. The Willmet Village Intergovernmental Working Group, Mrs. Kim and Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs.
Thank you. Um, we met, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met last Wednesday at the McCallian Center. That's melancholy, isn't it? And, um, and it was a great meeting. Um, I'm sorry that you missed it, Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs, because, um, what we did was we had a presentation on the last, the two topics, uh, the topics that we've had for the last two years, sustainability and mental health awareness. And so the woman who now works for all of us, uh, primarily at the village, uh, she came and she spoke about the sustainability efforts that have, you know, been undergone in the last two years. And, um, and then, um, we had an update on the, um, Mental Health Awareness Initiative. And there will be a new program that's launching, um, in February. Um, and it'll be running from February through May. And, um, it is titled Well Met. And, um, hopefully you'll be seeing a lot of, um, of, um, I guess, like, you know, just little snippets that be sort of interspersed throughout, um, like newsletters. And, um, there's probably gonna be like a push on social media to just build awareness for our community. So that was pretty much it. Carrie, anything to add?
No, I thought it was a really, um, a great meeting. It was so nice to hear of the progress and some of the celebrations of our collective sustainability efforts from Lucy. And that the Well Met campaign seems to be well organized. And, um, it will be neat to see that throughout our community, really, celebrating, recognizing, raising awareness, and in also helping, um, those throughout our community to recognize, um, where some resources exist. So, um, we've been glad to be a partner on the development of that campaign as well. And I'll also note, I know, um, I shared the two presentations with board members over the weekend. If you weren't able to open that over the weekend, I've reshared it. Um, so go ahead and click on that. Again, I think there was some restrictions on the, on the link at first, so I apologize for that. Um, but, uh, please look back at that because there were definitely some celebrations. And again, these are just snapshots, especially in, with regard to the sustainability presentation. Thought Lucy did a great job of putting together some highlights, but there's so much work that has been accomplished in that, um, in that realm across our community. So really just a lot of really neat celebrations to be recognized. And I think, um, the group started to talk about the next topic, um, but it seems maybe some additional conversation and exploration will be beneficial before, um, a topic is really settled.
Yeah, I don't think that we settled on the next meeting date, but I'm guessing it's probably sometime this spring.
I would think so. I would think so. The other thing that was accomplished at the meeting, Bonnie, you'll remember, is the decennial, um, exploration of shared services and, um, where there's some overlap with governmental agencies. So school districts aren't required to do that study every 10 years, but the other governments are. And so they shared some highlights of that, which was really quite interesting to, to hear what some of their studies review. Some additional cooperation to be had, and this was a great forum to hear about that.
Nice, thank you. Um, Illinois Association of School Boards, Mrs. Pathless.
Thank you. Um, just two quick updates. Just wanted to let everyone know that the IASB Division meetings are scheduled um, at sites throughout the state from February 27th to April 3rd. The North Cook County Division meeting, um, is set for March 4th, uh, 6 to 8 at the Hilton in Northbrook. I guess they're going to discuss AI. So that's, that's timely. Um, I think you can register online if you're interested. Uh, the second one, uh, presentation or event that they're having is entitled New Board Member Orientation: The First 90 Days. That is not actually for the new board members, but for people who are on the board or for superintendents who may want some information about how best to welcome your newest members. That is February 6th from 12 to 1.
Thank you. And Legislative Update, Mrs. Pathless.
Hey, the Legislative Update. Uh, the Illinois Lame Duck Legislative Session, which is my favorite name for legislative session, um, officially began on Saturday, January 4th. Um, majority of the bills heard in committee and on the floor were not related to K through 12 education, but they did have one notable bill that passed during the final hours, and that was the bill regarding the halal and kosher meals, um, which had actually passed in 2023, but was vetoed by Governor Pritzker. Um, uh, who, I guess, he vetoed it, I guess, um, because he had concerns about ISB, um, being able to have a contract, a master contract, and that there were no funds being appropriated with the bill. Um, so this, the bill still does not have appropriation. So I imagine, given the $3 billion projected deficit this year, that, um, they probably won't be able to get funding for that bill. Um, and then finally, the inauguration of the 104th General Assembly took place on Wednesday, January 8th. And so they have started their new legislative session. Um, so now we'll, we'll see what they come up with in the year ahead.
Thank you. Moving on to information items, Dr. Kremis-Coley.
Thank you. Uh, just a few things to report. Um, first of all, the board does not have any written communications to report in terms of administrative announcements. Um, first of all, the League of Women Voters Student Government Kickoff Event was held. We're thrilled to again be partnering with the League of Women Voters to support, um, the student government program for our students at WJHS. Uh, we kicked off the program last Wednesday evening, um, with the annual kickoff event. Uh, thank you to Erin Stone and Bonnie Kim for representing the board at this event. And I think Cory and Katie and our grade level administrator Jeff Bad and our WJHS teachers and administrators were there as well. So thank you to everyone who participated and actively supported this, um, great event and the kickoff. Um, this year, our students will be partnering with the Village Council of Willmet to explore issues and protocol of village government. We're excited for their learning and participation in this great program. So we're really grateful to the League of Women Voters for continuing to support this partnership. Um, later on tonight's agenda, we have several, um, items in preparation for the upcoming school year. Um, but most notably, registration is open. And so we always, at this time of year, make a plea to our families to get their students registered. Both new students and returning students need to register. That helps us with our staffing and making some decisions. We'll be having some important meetings already this week to start talking about, um, next year's plans. And so, um, as soon as families can register, that's really helpful. It's especially important for our kindergarten program because those are students who will be new to us. And that helps us to staff appropriately with our full-day kindergarten program. Starting next school year, we're really eager to make sure that we have the, the very best teachers in our kindergarten classes to welcome our students. Um, and then also our Lechner Early, um, Education Program, also known as LEAP for three and four-year-olds, is also open for registration at this time. Um, I'll make a quick mention about emergency weather-related school closures and considerations thereof. Uh, we had a couple of bitterly cold days. And, um, we're really glad we were able to keep schools open. It was, um, close, really monitoring, um, weather and, and temperatures and building conditions and, um, buses, and we were glad that all allowed us to remain open. Um, indoor recess was a thing for a couple of weeks. Unfortunately, that gets to be hard in our buildings. Um, but I think everybody fared okay, all told, and, and much appreciation to our principals and teachers and staff who helped students to get into the school building as quickly as possible and limit exposure during those really frigid cold days. Um, we're back to decent weather now, so we hope that stays. But anytime we're looking at, um, weather-related school closures, we are always carefully monitoring not only the weather and weather conditions, but our buildings, the roads, um, the buses, um, all those things that help to ensure that our students and staff can get safely to and from school as well as be safe while they're at school. So, um, as always, there is a, a page on our website if parents want to learn more information. So, as always, there is a page on our website if parents want to learn more information. We try to proactively communicate to families so that they know that they will receive information as well. Under FOIA's, the district received two FOIA's. One from Mark and Catherine Hall requesting records from the last 10 school years related to a teacher's disciplinary practices, parental feedback, and administrative handling of these and other matters of concern. And also, from Ms. Norman at the Illinois Retired Teachers Association requesting names and contact information for all certified staff retiring in 2025.
I just have a quick comment. I should have jumped in earlier, but I didn't. No, I just wanted to mention that I, with Mrs. Stone, went to the Student Government Kickoff. And I've attended for the last couple of years. And I have to say that this year was really exciting, because there were so many students who were involved. I think there were like twice as many students as last year. And it was really well organized. And, and I had a particularly great group of students who were so engaged and engaging and had a lot of really great questions. And I'm like, they're all going to be leaders of our community one day. And so, it was really great to get a chance to spend some time with them.
The group I was with was fantastic. I mean, just exactly as Mrs. Kim said, but asked a lot of really thoughtful questions. It was great.
Such a wonderful program. Glad to hear that it was well received by everyone. That concludes my reports.
It does. We're moving on to annual business.
We have a number of items. We'll start with Dr. Gwacki.
Our school calendar for 25-26, as Katie and I reported in December. This is a product of committee work that includes teachers, support staff, and administrators. And we're pretty excited about where we landed with the calendar. We align with Nutria as much as possible for the big breaks, like winter break and spring break. But the half-days and the one-day off here and there is, quite honestly, just not something we're able to align perfectly with, with Nutria. But we're excited with the calendar. There have been no changes since we presented to you in December, so we're speaking up for that tonight.
Student fees, Mr. Goldsmaier.
Sure. So, we already heard about how we reviewed them two weeks ago. And generally, by category, we try to typically apply to a similar increase within a certain type of fee. I do want to point out two maybe exceptions or differences from that general rule. In the instructional materials fee, where we targeted CPI, the exception in that is the kindergarten fee, which, how we arrived at the new fee is the materials that are used in kindergarten near, pretty closely, the, what we see in grades one and two. So, we set the new kindergarten fee at $50 less than first and second grade, the difference being the cost for iPad insurance replacement, since that grade level does not have one-to-one iPads. And then, the other kind of exception to what we had applied was in the lunch program fees. This is good, next year would be the first year that we would break out and have a new distinct fifth and sixth grade fee. Previously, that had been the same for, at the same as the K-4 level. But we felt like that was mirrored what we're, what we're, on the expense side, what we're providing. So, now we have three distinct fees on the lunch program. But that is everything else we had previously covered related to the fees.
Board members, any questions or comments? I think we're moving on to technology stipends.
So, Appendix C of the Support Staff Contract calls out specific stipends that are important to the district that our technology specialists get trained in. And there's a stipend attached to that additional training. And so, with this new contract that we established a few years ago, we initiated a process by reviewing these stipends annually, rather than kind of just letting them sit there until someone said, hey, does this make sense anymore? So, we review them annually with leaders within the technology department, as well as the support staff union, to determine if the identified stipends still meet the needs of the district, but also, are they relevant to what's being offered, because technology changes faster than we can print it. And so, we reviewed that in December. Tonight's letter of agreement reflects the proposed changes. There's no additional ask for additional money. It's simply a renaming of many of the stipends that have already been listed in the contract, but it's current and up to date.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? And then, we're moving on to fiscal year 2026 budget calendar and resolution.
So, each year, the board, and historically in January, will pass a simple resolution that directs the administration to begin preparing a tentative budget for the, for the next fiscal year and establishes that fiscal year. So, that is one of the, one of the action items for tonight. And then, besides the resolution within that item, we also have a calendar for a kind of key budget and financial dates throughout this current calendar year that go with it.
Any questions or comments? Okay. We're moving on to board policy review.
Great. So, today is, tonight is a first reading of board policies that were updated from press last October. It takes a little bit of time for us to get the information. As you know, and we've talked about in the past, we review it. We make suggested changes against what press is recommending. And then, we ask our board attorneys to review it to see what their recommendations are. Hopefully, you've noticed too, there's fewer and fewer changes, because we've been reviewing so many more, so much more frequently. So, tonight's, some are just for review, showing that we're up to date with where presses, and some are, have suggested revisions. And so, with that, we'll take any questions.
Mrs. Pathless.
I have, I have one, just maybe addition of the word "and" in, I guess it's two, colon, one, two, zero. Page number on my thing. Under mandatory training for members of the board, number one, professional development leadership training in, colon, one, education, two, financial oversight, three, four. And then, I think after the semicolon, or maybe that should be a colon, and before the number five, maybe there should be an "and"? Then, I just had one other one, unless someone has a question on that one. And that was related to four, colon, one, seven, zero. It's the AED one. I, I don't know what a district attendance center means. What do you know?
A school building.
It's just a school fancy word for a school building. And then, I had a question about that the district shall have an AED on-site, as well as a trained AED user. Under, that's the last sentence of that paragraph. It says, "available during activities or events sponsored or conducted or and conducted or supervised by the district." Does that include, like, when the Park District uses the basketball courts on a Saturday and Sunday?
Those aren't district-sponsored. We don't, we're not required to have a staff, one of our staff members on. But I do think that the Park District has an obligation to do that as well. Kristin or Cory, do you know specifics there? Or we can gather some additional information, just to be sure, because it's a really good question.
Yeah, it just seemed like they're in such high use during weekends.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. Our coaches are trained, they're all CPR-trained and trained to use AED. So, anytime we have our own athletic events, but I don't know about Park District.
I'll just practice it as well. It's a good question.
Obviously, the AEDs are still here. They're readily accessible and available. But to have a trained staff member is, is your question, I hear, and that's a good one. So, we'll get some additional information.
Thank you. Any other board members, Mrs. Paling?
Just in appreciation, I think this is new, thanks to what John had asked. But the legal references must have been a lot of work. But I think that that is a really great resource for anyone who might be wondering why certain policies might be there. And so, I, it was noted and appreciated.
Thank you. Any other board members?
I just noted a couple of strange spacing items when I was reading through, which Heather, I can show you afterward, or I think, actually, this is pretty simple. Two, colon, one, zero, five. Page two of five. Just down toward the bottom, under 12, it says, "A Board Member." The "A" in board, it just seemed like it was, the spacing was a little off there. And then, I think I've noticed a similar on two, colon, one, one, zero, under the duties of the president. That preside just looked a little off. Again, just spacing, and it might just be my eyes. I think that was it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. This is another opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Are there any audience members who wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay. Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
Move to approve the 2025-2026 school calendar. Move to approve the student fees for the 2025-2026 school year as contained in Exhibit A of this report. I move to approve the attached letter of agreement with the Support Staff Union indicating changes to technology stipends. I move to adopt the attached resolution establishing the school district 2026 fiscal year and direct the superintendent to prepare a tentative budget and approve the attached budget planning calendar as written. I move to approve the personnel report dated January 27th, 2025. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between December 17th, 2024, and January 27th, 2025 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $46,892.84. O and M fund, $44,867.57. Transportation, $174,135.85. Capital projects, $237,284. For total all funds, $503,180.26. I move to approve the manual checks issued between December 17th, 2024, and January 27th, 25, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $1,305,477.70. O and M fund, $264,980.90. Debt services, $916,271.25. Transportation, $4,183.92. Capital projects, $480. Tort, $379,128. Total all funds, $2,870,521.77. I move to approve the first reading of the Board of Education Policies, two, colon, one, zero, five, two, colon, one, one, zero, two, colon, one, two, zero, four, colon, three, zero, four, colon, six, zero, four, colon, one, five, zero, four, colon, one, seven, zero, five, colon, one, zero, five, colon, two, zero, five, colon, nine, zero, five, colon, one, two, zero, five, colon, one, two, five, five, colon, two, three, zero, six, colon, one, three, five, seven, colon, one, zero, seven, colon, one, zero, zero, seven, colon, one, eight, zero, and seven, colon, two, zero, zero.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabebs.
Yes.
John Caesarredi.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. The a's have it, motion carries. We're moving on to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there any good in welfare? It's Hart.
Well, I would just say that after 11 years in this district, last week, I attended my first High Five Choir concert, and it was wonderful. Allison was, was there as well, and we were just talking about that. And I don't know, I guess if there's anyone listening who is not familiar with High Five Choir, I think it started at Nutria, and then District 39 adopted it, as far as I understand. But it's just a great demonstration of inclusivity and students supporting one another despite their abilities or disabilities. And through singing, all the students come together, and they build and grow new friendships and build acceptance around one another. And everyone plays a very important role. And it was a wonderful, wonderful performance. It sounds like last fall, there were like 35 to 40 students participating in High Five, and that jumped to 66 this year, which is really encouraging to see the student interest. And with that, the program wouldn't take place if they weren't, Mrs. Martin leads it, and she did a great job, by the way, call out for her. She had to quickly scramble and find four more staff members in order to support the increase in student participation. And it was, really says a lot that she was able to do so, and just very grateful for the willingness of those people that rose to the occasion and were able to make this awesome program take place. It's for sharing that. Anything to add, Allison?
I would just add, first of all, it was truly heartwarming. Like, I think I needed that last week. And it was just really, it was truly a heartwarming and wonderful concert. And a plug, May 8th is their next concert. It's in the spring. It's at 4:15 at High Crest. So, you too can join.
And I'll just throw my husband under the bus here, because he, he came to, he came to the program as well, and he's picked up my daughter before, and I thought he was well aware of this. But he started looking at his phone, and I kind of nudged him that, you know, why would you look at your phone? He said, well, I don't know what this is, so I'm Googling it, because it's fabulous. So, we all thoroughly enjoyed it.
So many students involved, too. It is so cool to see how many, how many students from all walks of life, all groups, all. It just, it was really fun, and all of them up there shining.
Students who came back, too, from Nutria and joined.
Oh, right, they pulled the alumni.
Students, yeah.
Nice. Thanks for sharing that. That is heartwarming. Anyone else have some good in welfare to share? Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs.
I do. I just want to say that the, the team today demonstrating the curriculum, what a great way to teach the board. What is happening in our schools, that was incredible. It feels like it takes teaching and learning to a totally different level. Yes. Nobody ever asked me what I thought. It was like spoon-fed. Right? And that is just
Very different.
Truly engagement in its finest. Thank you for having that today.
Thanks for highlighting that. Anyone else? We need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiations, special education, individual student matters, and specific personnel.
Move to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiations, individual student matters, and specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yeah.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Faes?
Yes.
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 7:50 PM.